Garrett except for Rick is still gone. Additions to the agenda.
There's one.
One, as you guys received in your email. Adopted agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Approve and correct the minutes from the May 8th regular meeting and the May 16th special meeting. They're in your packets.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second.
So I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Heidi. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Financial reports. April 2018's treasurer's report, which is in your packet. Bob?
Nothing on the treasurer's report. It's on everything continues to go the way that we believe it's going to go. So, we're good.
I got a motion from Heidi and a second from Bruce. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Audit and approval of the bills. We have the additional April's 2018 bills and the May 2018 bills. Cheryl?
I had a chance to go look through the bills and like Bob said, it's pretty much business as usual. Looked pretty smooth, all within what we budgeted. One thing that stood out to me was we had to pay a significant amount for snow removal for the march through May. Other than that, nothing really jumped out.
And the only other thing I would add is that when I was looking through, I forgot what SFRC is and that's really the solar energy company that, so there, we're paying a bill to them, but then we get reimbursed through Excel. So on that, right now, is saving us money. So it's working the way it's supposed to.
Heidi, approve the bills.
Okay. So I got a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Consent agenda. Review and consider authorizing the following 2017-18 school year career increments. Twenty-five years, Jackie Campbell, Carleen Jolkoby, Todd Knutwig, and Jay Thompson. For thirty years, Lyndem Meyer.
Mayor.
And Karen Mump Thomas. So congratulates to them. Review and consider approval of the following staff for the Painesville area summer targeted service program for June 11th through June 15th. We have Jennifer Wertz, 26.5 hours, and Kim Johnson, 26.5 hours. Number three, review and consider approval of the PAAS programs assistance for the 2018 summer staff assignments effective June 1st through August 31st. And those are Jaclyn Gruber, Valerie Miller, Sue Teicher, Wanda Hazi, Jaclyn Scooglan, Alexis Scooglan, Jenny Haug, Maggie Gilmore, Diane Gilk, Rebecca Bertatolo, and Jaclyn Campbell. And then number four is review and consider approval of Joan Ronigan as an inter- integrational program professional service for July 10th, 2018 through August 2nd, 2018. So those are your consent agenda.
The addition.
Oh, I forgot, sorry. And then the consent agenda is number five, review and consider approval of the resignation from Janet Brinkman, food service worker effective June 1st, 2018.
Just a few things on those, that the first one, number one, is just contractual item. Number two is cost neutral, cost neutral to us because it goes for targeted service. Number three, again, these are, because the PAAS program is just continuing to get bigger and bigger. Number four is we have an integration program, it's really kind of a summer school that we run through with Melrose, so those people are going through with using our integration budget. We're paying a paraprofessional to help run that program. So when we send students, we also send a paraprofessional to help them with that. And then number five is just a resignation. Janet's done a good job for us, but I think she's going in a different way, so.
Can I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So I got a motion from Heidi.
Second.
Second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Business. First reading revision of the 2017-18 budget.
And you all have that budget available. I'm just going to go through a few things with it. You've had a chance to take a look. Remember, this is the first reading, so we're not going in. In fact, I do expect it to change a little bit for the next reading, and I'll get to that. When you take a look at our adopted 1718 revenue and our revised revenue, nice thing is that it's gone up. It's gone up by about $176,000. Now, I would warn you, but this was a surprise to us. We did get some more, most of that is because of special education. All right, and some of it's because we didn't quite use everything that we had budgeted, but the big hunk of it is special education. And I would remind the board that the first year I came here, they were taking $100,000 out of our budget because of things that happened two or three years, I think, before I got here. So I'm always a little reluctant when I'm making it, but I, on the other hand, I would rather be on the side of that than on the other side. So anyway, that's mainly the revenue part is the special ed. When you look at then, the change as far as the expenditures, we did spend a little less than what we expected, but not a whole lot. All right? Food service. We made less revenue than we thought, but we also spent less because we didn't have, we weren't selling as many lunches as we have in the past. We believe part of that's because we didn't have as much free and reduced signups this year as we've had in the past, so that did, it hurt our budget. We're still fine. We still came out ahead, but just not as far ahead as we had projected. Community ed was pretty close as far as the revenue. They did, they made, got a little bit more, but they also spent more this year than what they had before, but either way, we're still not far off from where we were. For the capital, we had a little bit. E-rate really is the difference as much as anything. We didn't, when we originally did our budget, we did not have E-rate in there yet, so, but that's kind of comes in and then it goes out. So that's, about where we were. We knew when we were doing some things with capital that we're going to spend on the budget a little bit, because there were just some things that we need to get done throughout the year. Buildings and grounds, construction, that's really just interest. The interest rates, interest rates went up. We made more money because of it. But again, that's been spent down every year, so we have another big project that we're doing in the, in the summer that will take another $300,000 off that amount. So every year, it's less and less. Debt service, you know, that's just our buildings, that gets adjusted as the state needs to. So that's just, the trust fund is just interest on what the change there is, and so is the sell of the building. If we just got more interest than we thought because of the interest rates going up. Any questions on the first part? Okay, in the middle part, I'm not going to spend any time on that. That's just telling you whether it's positive or negative as far as that goes, but it's really down at the bottom, the actual fund balance piece. And when you look at the general fund, we projected $1,477,776 of on assigned budget, and because of that special ed piece, now we are up at $1,712,554. I really am happy to see that. With the negotiations that we had, I really thought that would be more of just a straight wash, which it would have been if we had not gone the additional special ed dollars, because next year, I'm projecting, and you'll get that budget at the next meeting, that it will, that fund balance will drop some. So now that's gone up a little bit more. If it stays that way, it's kind of nice, because it will offset some of the costs for the next year when it goes down. Food service got, went up a little bit, and it's nice, a reminder, just as a reminder, we can't use food service dollars other than for food service. And we do make a little bit off of our summer program. We don't set the prices or anything for that, you know, they set the prices, but if we have a good one, it does build up our, our food service reserve fund a little bit. Community ed went down just by a couple thousand dollars from what we expected. Capital tech, this is where there'll be some changes. Our operating capital only has gone up, and we keep planning on it going up a little bit. If something ever happens, we want to have a decent reserve fund, even $260,000 is a humongous reserve fund with capital. If one boiler went out, it'd take at least half or more of that, that budget. The tech levy went down from what we projected, but that we were saving for that, and as Garrett will report a little bit, we use those dollars again to purchase more of the Chromebooks. So that's really why we went down, that it was expected that our reserve fund would drop. Okay, so that wasn't unexpected for us. Long-term facility maintenance, this is the one that I believe will change probably considerably when I come back next meeting, I'm meeting with my administrative team. This is kind of what we have right now, but there's still going to be some funds spent in June that will drop that down. So there's things that we put in the budget that haven't been spent. That's all the money that's there, but again, yeah, I know, for instance, we put $10,000 in for the, the elementary school bathrooms. Okay, that wasn't spent this year. It'll be spent next year, so when we carry it over, really, that's gone too. So I'll come up with a more accurate number for that at the next reading. The building construction, again, is just dropping, that we're just spending it down, that'll continue to spend down. By the end of next year, there will be nothing there. It will be gone. Debt service, again, that just adjusts itself, the trust fund, that just, you know, that has been consistently there, makes a little bit more with interest, but virtually, they use that money for scholarships right now, and it just, money goes out with the interest that they make. They never knock down what, what the actual amount is in there. And the sale of the building is, the sale of our building, whatever, any additional money there is just interest for that. I think eventually here, whether it's in June or in July, you will hear some people come with suggestions on what we could use those dollars for going into next year, so then it'll be up to the board. So otherwise, I think everything is working the way it's supposed to work. Like I said, I will come back with the long-term facility maintenance, a number that's better so, but the capital numbers, just be aware, they could be adjusting themselves as we go into the next meeting. Board does not have to take any action with this. If you have any questions after you look at it more, give me a call, I'll answer them. Otherwise, it'll be back on the agenda for the next meeting. Next meeting, I won't spend a whole lot of time on it, other than any adjustments that we've made. Any questions you have right now? I was really surprised and excited, even though on special ed, it's still additional dollars that we can use, so I was grateful to see that, even if it's fleeting. It's better this way than having it the other way.
Right.
Otherwise, that's what I have for that.
All right, thank you. Nothing underneath personnel. Informational report. District Y technology committee, Garrett.
I know, it's a quick question.
We don't fool around here.
I wasn't done watching Netflix. So I'll just start right where Bob left off, with that tech monies from the tech levy for our tech budget. So what happened there was, we were saving for a few years, because we knew the computer rotation for student devices was coming up. So that's where that $125,000 came from, so $65,000 a year, and then that would replace our 150 district desktop computers, and then that's where we switched it, and we went with the Chromebooks instead, because then we could get 500 Chromebooks for the price of 150 desktops. So then that's where that money got spent down. So we knew that was coming, we were saving for a couple of years, and that's the same thing we do with like our teacher rotation of desktop computers, it's the same deal. So over the next few years, that's going to build, there's going to be a large amount there, and then it gets spent, so.
So that'll be the same thing, Garrett, as we go into the next couple of years also then?
Exactly. Yep, so you'll see that number increase over the next couple of years, and then all of a sudden, it drops, and then it builds back up, and so that's how that kind of fluctuates. So that'll, that'll be continuous. District-wide technology, our phone system update, that's going to happen this summer, so that's been approved, we're going through that, all new district phones throughout, it'll be a digital system. We've talked about it quite a bit over the past few months, and so that'll be put in the summer. And then probably the biggest thing that staff will notice is their phones will now be right next to their computers, because it will come through their computer for the internet-based phones, and then voicemails go right from their phone right into their email. So they get a audio file right into their email. So hopefully, it'll be a lot more efficient for users also, because you don't have to be next to that phone, you don't have to dial in, you know, and check those voicemails, you just instantly get it to your email. So that'll be a great bonus, and we'll have more information on that once we do get that system in place.
And Mark, I think you had mentioned too, that you've got that tools, that same system at the hospital right now?
Yeah.
And that it's worked well, so.
Yep. Uh, next year, we want to make it more apparent for us, for our students, that their school email is their official form of communication. That's not uncommon anymore. You know, every college and university does that, a lot of schools now do that, since every student has a device, you know, we can get a lot of information out to them. So just staying on them of, you know, every 24 hours, make sure you're checking that. You know, if you remember in the business world, you know, five, 10 years ago, that was kind of the move, was, you know, as an employee, every 24 hours, make sure you check your email. Well, now it happens, you know, every 10 minutes, you're checking your email. So that's going to kind of where we're going for a lot of our announcements. For example, I sent out an email to our graduating seniors about a week ago, just so they had the information that I was presenting to them today before graduation practice, and about 90% of them had already received that email and read through it and knew everything. So we didn't have to spend a lot of time on it in there. And that was to get all of their Google information out of their school account, and they can bring it into a personal account with them. So that's what we did there. So we hope to be more apparent with that next year. This year, we didn't push it, just because we had a lot of new things going on, but next year, we want to talk about that even more. Number three, our sixth and ninth graders will be getting the newest model of Chromebook, and so that'll be coming in, in the fall. So we collected the senior devices today, we handed out 60, we got back 60. All of them are in perfect working condition, so that was nice. You know, when we originally planned this, we thought probably five or 10 wouldn't go back into the rotation, but all 60 will, so that's nice. So all of our pairs will be updated with new Chromebooks, replacing their old ones, which are five years old. And then the other 30 will go to an elementary cart, and then all of the eighth grade Chromebooks will go to two carts to replace at the elementary school. So going into next school year, we will replace all of our old Chromebooks that are now dated, five years old. So next year will kind of just be a year to pass through. The year after that, we technically will be one-to-one, K through 12, with the numbers. Now, that doesn't mean our kindergartners are taking devices home, but it means there are 20 devices there for that kindergarten class. So that will come not next school year, but the school year after, as we keep that rotation going. And then after that, it just continues to repurpose and replace the older devices at the elementary school, year after year. And then, let's see, summer tech conferences, this year, we are offering two different ones. So we have about 50 of our 75-ish staff members, certified staff members, that will be attending that. You'll be getting an email from me in the next week, inviting you guys to the Albany Tech Summit, and that's a cooperation with a whole bunch of different district or area schools. And so I'll have information about that, so when you get an email from me, that's what it's about. We're going to invite all of our school board members if they want to attend, just so you can see what's been going on in the classrooms. And so it's just a technology summit, there's sessions, there's a keynote speaker, there's a lunch, and that'll be at Albany this year. And so you'll be getting an email and information on that. And so basically, last year, we had about 250 attendees from our seven area schools. We have, I think, 200 registered so far, and so that continues to grow each year. And printing costs, I know I mentioned that last time, but we're down about $25,000 worth over the year before currently, and so that's a good thing. Just for a little perspective, a grade level of Chromebooks costs $17,000. So if you save $25,000 in printing costs in a year, that's a whole nother grade level. Now, you can't expect that year over year over year. Eventually, you know, there's, you have to spend money on paper. There's no getting away from that. But it is nice to see some decrease in that.
But the savings is every year, because you'll never buy it again.
Correct.
So it multiplies, so it makes a lot of difference in the total cost of this thing.
Yep, and then those Chromebooks, you know, last five years, and so we continue to have those in our district. And when we originally budgeted for the one-to-one, we didn't factor that in, we knew that was going to be a number, but it wasn't a reliable number. You know, the research says your, your printing costs will go down about 40% over that first three years, and we're at 25, well, 500,000 less sheets, so we're, we're on our way to that. And, you know, next year, we'll probably be about the same we are this year, the year after, once that elementary gets to have the devices whenever they want them, that's when we'll probably see another drop in our printing. Just right now, we have three sections of most classes in the elementary per grade level, and only two of the three have the option to have devices at one given time. And so that means one class is without, so a teacher can't rely on that device being there all day, so therefore, they have to plan accordingly. And so in two years, we'll probably see that drop happen again. And that's, I think, all I have for you. Any questions?
Could you talk a little bit about the reduction, you touched a little bit, but explain a little bit more on the actual computer labs that we've had before and now we don't?
Yeah, so being that we went to Chromebooks versus our computer labs, our computer labs, so over here, we have four computer labs in this building, 103, 131, 105, and 226. So we have four labs here. Basically, we're going to lose two of those labs, we're going to beef up one of the labs, and one of the labs will stay the same. So we're going to go from four labs to two labs. We have to always keep one lab, because we need high-powered machines for our AutoCAD and those kinds of programs to run. We also, for our Project Lead the Way, we have laptops which are higher-powered for some of the equipment that they need in the actual lab setting, and so we'll never get away from those, well, at least in the foreseeable future. Those companies are all trying to make web-based, you know, AutoCAD programs, but that takes a lot of brain power, and so we're probably still a year or two out from that, so we can't rely on that, but we will be repurposing our labs over the next year, so we will be going from four labs in this building to two labs. So that's what we'll be seeing, which our tech department loves, because that goes from, you know, maintaining 30 desktop computers in each of those labs to now half of that. And those, the Chromebooks, for example, if Jonah needs to push out an update to them, two buttons, and he can send it to whatever user group he needs to, so all of a sudden, 500 group, or 500 students now have that update. Whereas those desktops, he has to physically go sit at each one, log in, update it, go to the next one. He can't push those settings out in that scenario. So the amount of man-hours it used to take is being cut way down, and so he is very happy about that.
So that mean I'll need less of Jonah then?
I will leave the fifth on that. I'll let him speak for himself. I won't throw him under the bus that way. Obviously, you know, a lot of his work has shifted.
All it means is he'll do something different.
Exactly.
I'm sorry, I didn't, Jonah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to give you a hard time.
There's a never-ending list of stuff that he has, and so now he's just able to be a lot more efficient. But it also means we didn't have to increase staff. You know, with Jim retiring, you know, there was some extra bodies there at times when we needed it, and now we don't need that as often, so.
So we're going to be replacing some of the Chromebooks that are five years old. What do you do with those?
Most of them get recycled. We have a recycling program, a company that comes in. Problem is, there's a lot of security laws in place, so, you know, we, we've talked about it at the district technology committee at every meeting, what can we do with our old devices? Once they get out of kind of Google-supported five-year window, there's privacy issues, there's issues on our network, and so what we have to do with them is we have to recycle them with a secured, insured company. And so we have a vendor that we use, they come in, they take those devices, they power wash them, they clean them, they repurpose them. But basically, it's their signature saying, yes, all of the information is gone, all the information is deleted, all that kind of stuff. You know, whereas if we don't do that, there's a lot of data privacy issues, especially with minors' data.
So then they're reusable after?
Some of it's reusable. More of it, it sounds like a lot of it goes into parts.
Okay.
You know, so they strip that device down, and they are able to resell, you know, the power cord adapter for, you know, 35 cents, or whatever, but that's built into us being able to get rid of that device for free, so there's kind of that trade-off there.
That's curious.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, when we have talked about it, that, you know, maybe that's something that we could do, you know, as a, you know, a token, not, not a give it away, but, you know, for a few bucks or whatever, somebody needed a device like that, but when we started digging into it and all the privacy that, that those things hold on to, it's just, it's just not worth it. We don't want to be put at that liability.
Yep. Anything else?
And as you remember, the students certainly had at least very good impressions of how the one-to-one is working so far.
Yeah, so we'll collect the eighth grade devices on next Wednesday, I believe. First hour of study hall, we'll go room to room and collect all theirs, so we'll get all those back, and then when they get into ninth grade next year, that's when they'll get the new one, right at the beginning of the school year. So kind of the same process, but rather than doing all six through 12 next school year, we'll just have to do sixth grade and ninth grade. And so we'll kind of do that same start of the year, you know, registration night, open house night, the same process, but just with a lot less numbers, so.
It's nice to hear too, how the kids are taking care of the, you know, the Chromebooks and, you know, that they're not damaging them, that they're just taking good care of them. So I think hats off to the students.
Definitely.
It's really nice to see.
Now, we're not collecting the underclassmates, so they're taking their devices home for the summer.
Yep.
Is there instructions that you're giving them?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. So I think it was last week, Jonah sent an email to all students besides the eighth graders, because they won't have one that they're bringing home. Part of that is the timeline of reordering their new ones, it just doesn't work out perfectly. And they're switching from middle school more so to high school, so there's not really a high use for that, that student at that time. But in the future, we do have instruction that goes out, we have a website that goes out, so Jonah has sent that out to the students in the future, so sometime next week, I will be meeting with more of the students to just kind of discuss that, expectations, all that over the summer. You know, again, we can't rely on that they checked their email and went over that information, so we will have advisory lessons on that coming up, you know, just walking through, you know, put it on the charger, and originally, like we talked about, the problem is if we collect them, we have to put them in an air-conditioned room, we have to put them on a charger. The amount of man-hours it would take to do 500 devices, it's easier to send them home in the summer, and that's what a lot of schools are starting to go to. Unless your whole school has air conditioning, then an advisory teacher can easily manage, you know, 15 devices, but we don't have that option. So unless you want to install air conditioning in the whole building, I don't think anyone would complain. Except the budget, that wouldn't like it, but, yeah, so the information is going out. And then Lori will send out an informational link through JMC to all parents also, just letting them know, you know, some tips, tricks. You know, we, Jonah and I will have days, I think we scheduled four days this summer, you know, where they can come in and get assistance if they need something, versus, you know, every day getting one email here and someone trying to stop by here. Here's the four days that we will be in, so they already know throughout the summer, here's four days, we'll be there from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Obviously, we have a whole bunch of other stuff to do, but we'll be around the office enough where we'll be able to see anyone who pops in.
Good. Super. Thank you, Garrett.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, guys.
World's Best Workforce Committee, Bruce.
We kind of, it was kind of the last meeting, so Don, as usual, gave us all the rules of the state and all the things that we had to do. Someday, I'd love to be a mouse in the corner at the state of Minnesota to find out what they do with all them after we submit them. He got them coming in from every school, I kind of think they sit somewhere where nobody ever even looks at the things, but we spent mega time. We talked, a few questions on how it kind of combined with our CTEs and all of that kind of stuff for the World's Best Workforce, was kind of, that's what it was kind of all about, trying to create this great workforce in Minnesota. So we talked a little bit about that, but it was a pretty good meeting, it wasn't as much statistics as before.
Yeah, I think the other thing that was brought up is that some of our business class, our computer classes, that those are, those areas are being upgraded now, that some of the things that we've been doing in those classes, the kids are well above that, so those programs are starting to be looked at, each individual class in the curriculum and what they're going to be teaching, so they're starting to look at them now. So then once that's put in place, then we'll, we'll bring that group in, and they can kind of explain the changes that they made.
Okay. Thank you. Administrator report?
Just a few things, we're currently, currently putting together a list of people to help Just a few things, we're currently putting together a list of people to help us update our emergency response team, we're taking some from the city, some from the staff, we're putting that together. I met with, we met with the police chief and some administrators, and we're just picking things right now. I may or may not talk to a couple board members about being on that, it may be one of those things that we just get it done, because those are kind of the people who know what we need to do. And then bring it back to the board, remember that when we bring it to the board, it will be an abbreviated piece at the most, we'll probably explain in generalities what we've done to correct it, but we're not going to publish our response, emergency response out to everybody, so that people know what all our procedures are. So just be aware that that's going to be going on. Hope to get it started in June, is our hope, to at least have the first meeting and go from there. We're certainly working on our budget for next year, we'll present that at the first meeting in June, that'll be our first reading, and then we'll adopt it in the second meeting in June. All right? I'll try to meet with the financial committee before we do that, the first meeting, so hopefully we can get everything done. Then I'll meet with the financial committee, run it past them, take it to the board for the first reading, and then to the board for the second reading and approval. So that'll be for the 18, 19 budget. We also need to bring the five, 10-year plan to the district, I've just been waiting to see what the state was going to do. We'll have to make some decisions, I've set a meeting up for just the administration to clean up a couple pieces, to look at things, but I'll most likely try to bring it at the first meeting. I don't know if we'll have to adjust it based on what the state's going to do, but right now, to some degree, it's in Dayton's hands, because he could veto it, he could call a special session, he, you know, he could sign him, I don't know. This has been one of the more frustrating years I've seen. I know that everybody keeps saying they did all this stuff in the legislative sessions, I haven't seen it. The one thing they did do though, and I believe Dayton has signed now, is they've done some changes to the TRA plan. That was needed, should have been done a few years ago, they couldn't get it done, and I think they finally got a plan in place, and it's a good plan. So that was one thing, I am grateful that they got done. Bruce and I are meeting with Evan tomorrow, just to go over at the last facility meeting we talked about, now it's the point where we really need to get this thing more finalized, more polished, get a cost, and then start bringing more into the community. So we're meeting with them just tomorrow to see what their suggestions are and how we proceed with that. I'm going to set up one more policy meeting about mid-June. That means that I'm going to bring whatever policies we go over in that meeting to our last meeting in June. All right? So there's four big policies right now that I hope to kind of go through and get it out to the members, but that's kind of what we're going to do with that. One also being the wellness policy, we just about finished it last year, and then I waited for MDE to send me what was wrong with it, because that, when they do the food service review, of which they will do next year, that policy has to meet all their criteria. So I think we have just a little bit more twinking to do with it, not too much, and then that will come to the policy committee, and then will come to the board. There's not a lot of changes that we need to do with that. We're still looking at setting up a time for the CTE, kind of the advisory committee that we're putting together with the gala. It's just, we've just had a heck of a time finding, I date, that'll work for everybody. We're trying to get it set up, we'll do that as soon as we can. As I've mentioned, I think this is a great opportunity for both the community and the school district to work together to get that done. So we'll see how that shakes off, what we're trying. Graduation is not far away. Just a reminder to the board, it's a Sunday, May 27, 2 o'clock, high school gym. All right? Students are done Thursday, May 31st, staff are done Friday, June 1st. So the year is coming to an end. I was at the FFA and Senior Honors Banquets this last Sunday, both just excellent. I'd just say, we have some tremendous students in our district. It was just amazing, both of the banquets were just outstanding. Let's see, oh, I got this, pass this down, we got this from the FFA, just appreciation of the school board for your support of their program. I also got just one of these, it's, you know, probably could pick these up at the graduation, but one of those, if you want to just kind of see how that's going to all shake out for the graduation. And then, I think typically, we have brought the administrators in for the first meeting in June. I think this next, for June, we're going to bring them in, the second one, just because we're going to have a policy committee there. Some of these, they may want to also explain some things about the policy and answer questions. So we're going to bring them in the second one, then I believe July only has one. Correct. So that'll kind of work out okay. That's what I have, any questions for me?
Okay. Any other board sharing? Lou, do you have anything to talk about today?
No, sure.
No, no, no.
You got something here, huh?
Yeah, you got something else to talk about.
Okay, we, West Central Ed Board met in Albany, May 12th, and discussed enrollment, I can go through the enrollment, it's changed a little bit since last time. Had a total of 33 students at the ALC, there was six from Albany, 15 from Melrose, four from Painesville, six from SOCC Center, and then two others from out of state, or out of district, Uppsala and ACG Center. And then in the Beacon Program, we had a total of 11, four from Albany, one from Melrose, one from Painesville, four from SOCC Center, and one from St. Cloud. And then the STAR Program, there's only a total of one, and that, that was from Melrose. Then birthed till three, there was seven from Albany, they got a minus four from Melrose, and they got, oh, four from Melrose, six from Painesville, eight from SOCC Center, for a total of 25. Then, oh, we, oh, we discussed and went over the policies, second reading for the 802 disposition of obsolete equipment materials, and 714 for fund balance. And under the new business, we went to, we went over the calendar. Now, the calendar, Melrose and SOCC Center go together, not together, I shouldn't say that, not the same calendar, but they have the same dates on each one of their calendars. So in other words, early starts, late, or early outs are all the same in both districts. Otherwise, it was such a mess, you take one kid to Beacon Program and SOCC Center, and nobody to Melrose, because they had an early out or a day off or something, so they got together and finally got that taken care of. That was, that was already done last year for this year, so it worked out real well. And then we went over the certified handbook and the budget, and we had some personnel changes, some retirement, some resignations, and some new hires.
Just as, just a certified handbook for them, is their, kind of their agreement?
Yeah, the handbook agreement.
The negotiation piece?
Yeah. And that was it, our next, well, we have a special meeting, well, I forgot when that was at, June 11th, I believe. Isn't it, Bob?
I think it's June 11th.
And that's the special meeting.
Yeah, there's going to be a number of hires out, they still need positions, they still need to fill, so they decided that we needed to have one more meeting.
That was it. Any questions? If you do, ask Bob.
It went pretty well. I think, you know, they, we did talk a little bit also about business manager, there was some at least discussion about that, because right now, the WCD hires some of the business manager time from, or from SOCC Center, but they really don't have time to give. So, and the WCD, because it just keeps kind of expanding, needs more time, so there's discussion, there's an outfit that you can rent or purchase time from, so they talked about that, and I think there's still some discussion that'll take place, nothing was resolved on that particular piece. So, and then I think the only thing the board might find interesting, or at least right now, you know, the decision was made not to look at moving
Oh, yeah.
The Beacon Program to Melrose at this time, there's still things we need to make sure that it's done the right way the first time. So that'll probably be pushed off a year anyway.
Anything else?
That'll do it.
Is that all you have?
That's all I have. Isn't that enough?
No, I need one more thing from you.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, I got a motion from Lou, a second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing not all in favor, signify by aye. Pull the same sign, carry. Thank you, Lou.
Lou, I'm going to miss that.